Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Good to have some elected officials here. I see Judge Bucci, and I think we're going to have Judge Lyles maybe later. Oh, there he is. He's bookcased right there between two. And Sheriff Gullidge, so glad to have you this morning. So I'll call the Pauling County Board of Commissioners work session to order on this June 22nd, 2021, and remind everyone to turn off their devices. Yeah, Brian?
Tommy, thanks, sir.
We are so honored to have Pastor Gene Morehouse from Westside Christian Church open us with our invocation and lead us in the pledge. Thank you for being here, Gene.
Please stand. Father, we thank you for the day ahead. We thank you for remembering, Father, just a few days ago, remembering what they taught us, right from wrong, common sense. And sometimes we look at the people around us and wonder, where did their common sense go? As a child, I remember being told, if you get in trouble, go to a police officer. They'll help. Now we've made the police an evil thought, defunding them, not supporting them. It's ridiculous, Lord. And then we've got the Ten Commandments that we've made into a million different laws. Why can't we come back to a common sense and a common knowledge of loving you and caring about each other, caring that all lives matter, whether unborn yet through old age? Be with our commissioners, strengthen them and encourage them. Be with our county attorney, and when he sees the ten simple commands and how complicated man has made it, that he can make sense of them and make a common knowledge and a good value. We thank you for your love and your compassion to us for the gift of your Son. And we ask that truly we may remember that Jesus died once for all, and that all of us can find salvation through Him. He is the way, the truth, and the life. And we thank you, Lord, for divving your life for us and preparing a place for us to dwell in eternity. In the name of your Son and our Savior, all God's family said, amen. Let's do the pledge. Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you so much, Pastor Morehouse. It was a wonderful way to start. The June 8th, 2021 work session minutes and the June 8th, 2021 board meeting minutes are available for review. We'll start out with announcements and recognize Employee of the Month, Melvin Tally, in our Team Polling segment. And Melvin's with the Water System Department. We had a good time surprising him in here a couple of weeks ago.
There, so that's where you're at, isn't it?
No, sir.
That's where he's at.
Oh. John's there. I got the wrong. I got the wrong statement.
Right.
Wow.
Oh.
Congratulations.
I've been here for a long time. I get the floor every morning.
It was going to be an expensive repair.
Even this long after, I still don't have accurate pricing for replacement of that piece of equipment. We were up in the $20,000 to $30,000 range. Melvin did it for like 500 bucks and a welder. His ability for, you know, repair, I mean, there's nothing that he can't fix. He's really able to do a lot with a little.
And he's willing to go across the county to another plant to make it happen.
So he didn't know why he was in this room, and he didn't like being here. So Board of Commissioners would like to present a public safety award to law enforcement communications supervisor, Ms. Heather Emery, with the Sheriff's Office, GCIC Division. Ms. Emery couldn't be here this morning, but in her absence, we're glad to have Gary and Chad receive this award for her.
Thank y'all so much for this. I hate that Heather's on vacation. Of course, you've got to get them in when you can. But Heather's worked for Sheriff's Office since November of 2017, and in January of 2021, she was appointed as our law enforcement communications supervisor for GCIC Division. This division provides 24/7 services. Sheriff's Office staff working under the laws and guidelines of the Georgia Criminal Information Center. She's worked diligently updating our policies and procedures, hiring qualified applicants, and ensuring that Sheriff's Office complies with all state regulations. She's worked with her staff to identify areas of expertise and assign duties that best fits our operations, making our division run more efficient. She has demonstrated her abilities to lead and build a good team during her time over at GCIC, and we're very proud to nominate her for this award. I'd also like to thank Texas Roadhouse for donating a state dinner for two. And if I talk to her husband into it, I'll carry her out to dinner one night. So I hate she's not here for it, but she is a good girl. She's hardworking. She's one of those that you don't have to do anything but give a little bit of direction, and all she goes with it. You don't have to watch her. She does a good job for us, and we appreciate her.
I'm going to read the award here. Public Safety Appreciation Award presented to Heather Emery in recognition of outstanding service to her community, presented by the Pauling County Board of Commissioners on this 22nd day of June, signed by all of us. And she can either come into my office, and we'll give this to her, or you can give it to her.
I guess you do. You're busy. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you.
I have no invited guests this morning. Bid awards. Item number two is to award a contract to Steele and Associates for the Burn Hickory Park access improvements in the amount of $183,475 that will be funded by Spalast located in Post Four. And we have Ms. Pollard and Director Michael Justice here to share the news with us.
And I'm going to get out of the way fairly quickly. So we had two participants with this bid. Bids ranged from $183,475 up to $538.33. And we had Michael Justice, as well as Chuck Rand with Edison Engineering assisting with its project.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Several months back, you awarded a design and engineering contract for this project. It was designed, as Tabitha said, by Edison and Chuck Rand. We took it out to bid, and what this project does, it improves access in the undeveloped areas of Burn Hickory Park. There's about 60 acres additional that's there. This will improve that access there for pedestrian usage, as well as emergency vehicle access and things of that nature. Alongside Chuck, we reviewed those bids. We're very confident that the low bid contractor can get this done and will do a great job for us.
What was the reason for the big difference in bids?
Chuck, you want to help me with this one? We looked at the unit values, and then I'll get out of the way. I'll just tell you that. We looked at the unit values good. Chuck will probably have a better explanation than I can give you.
Good morning, everyone. When we started on this project and got it up to the bid standpoint, we were expecting this would come in about 200, 2 and 1/4. As far as the discrepancy in bids, I mean, the prices from the second contractor were just, they were just way high for what we were doing out there with this trail. The prices from Steele were in line with what our expectations were, as well as what we would expect for normal trail construction. I mean, we're not going out there and building a superhighway. This is a, this is a trail and a few bridges. So we feel comfortable with the price that was provided by Steele after a conversation on the phone with them, that there was nothing unexpected from their side as far as questions or anything that they left out of that pricing.
Any other questions? Michael, I appreciate all the pictures you sent of the work that they have done.
Yes, sir.
I like pictures. It looks like they've been real active all around the metropolitan Atlanta area. I asked this gentleman on my right a couple of weeks ago about, we don't only appreciate his legal advice, but what he thinks would improve the county, and he said passive parks. This kind of trail is going to open up Burn Hickory to a lot more hiking and just outdoor activity for our citizens.
That's correct. Thank you.
Reports from committees and departments. We're glad that Sheriff Gary Gullidge is here to give us an update on all the SO activity. Thank you, Gary.
My pleasure. Thank you all for having me again. Put it on the whiteboard. I give all y'all one of these folders at your leisure. You ain't got no doubts, Dean. You can sit around and read what it's like to be busy, whether you're at home or at work or in the bed or asleep at church or whatever's going on. Ladies and gentlemen, as usual, we stay extremely busy. This report is from Sheriff's Office from January through May of 2021. During this time, the Sheriff's Office has patrolled 1,094,39 miles. Total arrested was 1,041. We've issued 778 traffic citations, handled 27, 20,762 complaints. They're high-volume calls. We had 1,728 alarms, 2,048 domestics, 24 and 12 subpoenas and civil papers served, 1,443 suspicious incidents, persons and vehicles. We've handled 773 theft-atacings, burglaries, and enter-and-autos, performed 2,513 traffic stops, arrested 25 DUIs. We've had 1,268 warrants cleared, conducted 329 patrols, 664 juvenile incident reports with 471 assigned and 193 was charged. The detention center, as always, stays busy. We booked in 1,080 during the months, and the average population at the jail over here was 150. Our transport division made up 451 adult and seven juvenile transports during the month of January through May. That's the short version and the highlights, and I know y'all got a lot to do besides listening to me talk, so I'll be quiet and sit down. Y'all have anything for me?
Any questions, comments for the sheriff?
Ain't no pictures in it, Brian. Sorry.
Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
We have no one who's signed up for participation on agenda items. The consent agenda item, item number three, Deputy Rodney Schubert retired from the Sheriff's Office on June the 11th, 2021. And the policy to retire a service pistol to a deputy has been met by Deputy Schubert. Sheriff's Office requests to retire Deputy Schubert's Glock Pistol Model 21, serial number TYN964. Consent agenda item number four is discuss action to consider the annexation of 15.4 acres of property located off the Villa Rica Highway into the city of Dallas, located in Post One. So would any of the commissioners like to move either of these consent agenda items to regular business? So we will keep them as consent agenda items for this afternoon or for this evening's vote. Old business, none. New business, item number five, is action to accept a $600,000 Appalachian Regional Commission grant for the Hiram State Route 92 sewer extension located in Post Three. Ms. Ashmore is here to fill us in on that one.
The State Route, Hiram, State Route 92, Hiram Sewer Extension extends from the existing sewer in Hiram that was installed about five years ago by the city, and extends it out to State Route 92 and down from Hiram Sude to pass Nebo Road. And the intention is to sewer properties that are currently served by septic tanks, and those septic tanks are failing. In February, we've been working on this project for about, for over a year now. In February, we brought you a request to submit a grant application to the Appalachian Regional Commission that we had worked with Finance and with Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. This is the first time, I believe, we've received a grant from the Appalachian Regional Late last month, the chairman received an email, and I was happy to be copied on, an email that says, "I am pleased to inform you that the Appalachian Regional Commission has approved your application for grant assistance." This is $600,000 toward the project, and it does have federal contracting requirements that will go into the bid package for this project. But we're excited to bring this to you this morning and to request the approval for the chairman to sign the appropriate documents to get this funding in place. We are currently working in parallel on the county funding part of it, and we have an opportunity with, to, it appears we'll have an opportunity to get state revolving funds at a 0%, a five-year 0% interest rate to do our match funding.
But we don't know that amount yet. We're still estimating.
Well, our total estimate is 1.7 million. So we'll be at approximately 1.1 going into that state revolving fund loan.
And Chuck Hart says we need to start next week.
He wanted to start last, he wanted to start next week about a year ago, right?
But also, tell them a little bit, though, that was created, though, that grant, what it was actually designed to do, to save jobs or something. It's infrastructure grants to save jobs.
It is, and it is, we had a lot of work, and we, the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, when we just said, what's available that could help this? It's employment-driven, and this is a perfect opportunity because that area is really suffering because of those failing septic tanks. You can't put a water-using business in there, and environmental health has been watching that very closely for many years. And it includes our own property. The Hiram Library is in this corridor, and they're restricted in what they can do because of septic as well.
Just from my own education, usually why I ever ask or say anything is, George, as far as the upgrade of that section of 92, is it already finished? Or can we add the sewer expansion along with that construction is what I'm asking?
I mean, to put you on the spot, but...
Morning. There's two phases of the 92 project in that area. You have the phase that's under construction right now that goes from Malone Road in Douglas County up to Nebo Road. That is on schedule, I believe, for July 2022 completion date. So actually, and then there's another phase that goes from Nebo Road north. That is still in the engineering phase, I believe. It's a 2023, 2024 timeframe, but I believe it'll be pushed out. There's still, there's a lot of engineering work to be done. So that's where they're at. I think we can contact GDOT and see where they are in terms of integrating what, you know, the county is proposing, you know, for that sewer. But they're close, you know, they're, as you, if you go down that corridor right now, there's active work going on. So, but we can, you know, try to coordinate what we can.
All right. Thank you.
And Chairman, our engineers have been coordinating with GDOT on this section as well to make sure that there are no conflicts.
Great. Okay. Other comments? All right. You're still up on number six. Action to award a contract to Top Rank Respondent Prime Engineering in the amount of $108,379.44 for the final design bidding and award phases of the engineering services for State Route 92 Hiram extension, higher sewer extension, Post Three.
Okay. We follow on to the last one. We are bringing you at this time the contract amount for the design phase, all the way through the award of the contract. Last, in 2020, we did a qualifications-based selection process, and Prime Engineering was awarded that contract. We only contracted at that time through preliminary engineering because each phase kind of drives what is going to be the cost of that next phase. So now that we've got the, we've got that preliminary engineering, decided we can move forward with that engineering. We also didn't want to come and do it too far in advance until we knew what that funding source was going to be because the federal contracting requirements have to be incorporated into our, into our contract documents. So this is a request to award $108,379.44 to move through that engineering, engineering, the solicitation and award phase.
That's exciting. Appreciate it, Lori.
Thank you.
New business seven and eight are also exciting in regards to grants from our judicial system in part of the county. So number seven is discuss action to accept a grant awarded to the felony drug court and authorize the chairman to execute all the necessary documents needed. And Judge Bucci is here to describe and enlighten us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good show, Hudson. Y'all want to join? All right. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to appear before you. I'll be brief. As many of y'all know, this drug court program has been in operation for a few years now. We launched in January of 16, and since that time, we've inducted over 120 participants. We've graduated over 50. And I like to keep up with, and at every graduation, if you've been to a graduation, you'll hear me give you these stats. But what we do is we pull the GCIC, the Criminal Crime Center Information Reports, and we compare the numbers of the two years prior to going into the program with the two years immediately after entering the program. And the reason we use two years is because it takes about that long, on average, to work their way through the program. And I can report to you that of our 54 graduates, in total, in the two years prior to entering the program, they had combined 156 arrests and 321 new criminal charges. Those same 54 graduates, in the two years after entering the program, had four arrests and six new charges. So we are achieving something. I brought Michelle Palmer, who is our coordinator, with us, and I asked one of our current participants to come along, and if there's time, he'd like to say a couple of things. I don't know what he's going to say, but I hope it's good. And I'll say this, at the risk of embarrassing Hudson a little, we don't, we don't play around in drug court. Some people don't make it through, and if they get ejected, they're typically looking at prison. And so Hudson was in a situation, how long ago? At least...
A year ago.
A year ago, where there was a real strong sentiment that he needed to be removed. And by the skin of his teeth, he hung on, and I wasn't optimistic, but I was wrong. And so Hudson, say a few things.
Yeah. I just want to say that, I mean, I honestly would not be here today without the Pauling County Drug Court program. It's saved my life. You know, it's gave my kids a father. You know, I'm a single dad. I got a five and an eight-year-old sons. And I've seen it, you know, being in the program, I'm around people that I was with on the street using, you know? And I've seen it save so many people's lives. It's just amazing to me to see people that, you know, I wouldn't trust with anything, that are now, you know, productive members of society. I mean, they have jobs, they have kids on the way. And I've been to rehabs, I've been to numerous other programs. Drug court works, and I definitely think Pauling County needs it. It's an amazing program, and like I said, it's saved my life. I've seen it save so many other people's lives that I didn't think would be alive today, you know? I just, yeah, I can't say enough about it. And like he said, you know, I took the long road, for sure, but honestly, I wouldn't change it for anything because taking that long road has, I've learned so much. I mean, drug court gives you the tools to succeed, you know? And then if you, if you choose not to, then you can't say you didn't have the tools at that point because you were definitely taught the tools in this program. I love it. I do. Like I said, I wouldn't be here today without it. I can't say enough about it. And yeah, that's about all I got.
Question for Hudson?
I just want to say congratulations and keep up the good, hard work.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I was just telling Ms. Palmer, you know, I enjoy coming to class and, you know, you build relationships with all these people that, you know, from Senator Beyond Solutions to, you know, Ms. Palmer to Judge Bucci. I really enjoy it. I do. I enjoy coming in there every morning. Even if I don't have to test, I still like to stop by and just say, hey, because, you know, those are people that have saved my life. I owe them everything.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hudson.
Thank you.
The only reason I like this job is because of the challenges that we have and the things we're able to accomplish. But what you've accomplished and what you've shared, well, I was tearing up while you were talking, so...
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you so much.
I was going to ask you, Judge Bucci, about the match that we have, the 254,000 and changes. Is that similar?
Yes, sir. So the State Funding Committee has authorized a grant in the amount of $254,976 to fund us through the year. So I'm not here asking for local funds at all. There's a 10% match, and we've traditionally used the date fund, which is funded through fines on crime, on, there's a surcharge on a fine and that kind of thing. So not asking for money. I am asking for y'all to please consider accepting the grant, approving the grant. We'll fund the 10% match through the date fund, and that's all I'm asking.
Hey, Dean, how many people's in the program usually at one time?
It fluctuates. I think we're in 30-something at this point, which is a little low for us.
Now, I've known some individuals that went through there and had some struggles, but made it through, and thank you for helping them through that also. But I saw their parents go through such a struggle for years prior to her being put into this program, and it was mostly due to not being able to afford help for their child. So is it lack of funding or some that could, or could more funding or more, accept more individuals into that program? Because, I mean, there's a huge problem with this going on, not just in this county, but everywhere. So is it, is there a way to expand it to help more individuals in something like this?
Well, you've mentioned a couple of things. Folks, parents that go through, it's a living hell when their, when their child is going through this. If they're looking at something outside of a... If they're looking at something outside of a drug court program, and it has to be privately funded, we have no involvement in that, and I'm not sure what funds are available. Sometime churches do it, and there's charities that will help out people like that. Our program is offered to people who are facing a revocation of probation or new charges, so they have strong incentive to come in because they're presented with a choice oftentimes. Usually, they're sitting in sheriff's jail, and they're offered the opportunity. We have to twist arms to get them to come in, and I can't order anybody to come into the program against their will. They've got to want to come in. And I hear things, you know, people over at the jail are saying, you know, "Don't do drug court. It's easier just to serve your time," you know. And so we have capacity to accept more people, but a lot of people just don't want to do it because it's not, it's not easy. But we can accept, and that's a goal. We want to get the numbers up, and we can do it with this grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And new business number eight, discuss action to accept a grant awarded to the mental health court and authorize the chairman to execute all documents needed. We're proud to have Judge David Lyles with us, and his program is fairly new.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to just echo what Judge Bucci said because he does such an excellent job up here. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, thank you all so much for the support you've given this program and also our Superior Courts in general. I truly do appreciate it, as well as the support that we get from Ms. Pollard with the flexibility. I come before you today to update the progress of the mental health court and to inform you of the grant we were recently awarded as well. As you well know, we began our kickoff in March of 2019. I don't have a total number with me today of how many participants we've had in the program. What I can tell you is right now I have six active participants in my program. I have one who is, an additional one who is in custody right now, and the reason they're in custody is because they came in addicted to a substance, and we are trying to get them clean and sober so that we can begin working with them. In addition to that, I have four more. We're going to induct three this Thursday and a fourth one within the next week or two, just going to put our numbers up as high as they have ever been. Our program is a little bit different because we're dealing not only with substance abuse like Judge Bucci has in the drug court program, but we are dealing with mental health issues. And every participant we have had to this point has had a dual diagnosis. In other words, they are all self-medicating through pills, through alcohol, or through harder drugs, and so we are struggling with both ends of that. I can tell you, we graduated one last year in the middle of COVID. We adapted with all of our participants and moved from in-person to virtual meetings, virtual therapies, and continued one-on-one sessions in person during all of this. We had two more graduates earlier this month. One of those graduates alone had 21 arrest cycles when they entered the program, had had multiple children taken away from her through DFACS because of her addiction and her issues. She has now graduated. She is not only holding down a job, but is running a business and is also working on certification with the, to be a certified addiction counselor. These programs change lives, just as Judge Bucci said when he was up here earlier. I think honestly it is the most important thing that we do as judges. We administer justice, we listen to cases, we do a lot of things, but what we do through these accountability courts changes lives, and you can see the change in the people that we work with. Commissioner, you referenced earlier that I was bookend when I came in. I have with me the courthouse administrator, Ms. Allison Bryant, and also Ms. Lauren Ortiz, who is my coordinator. I am surrounded by people who are a lot better than I am, who help me hold it together. I am the judge who runs this program. I oversee it, but quite honestly, all of the work is done by Ms. Ortiz and the rest of the staff. I simply am the face that's out in front of that, but she's the one who puts in all the work. She supplies me with all the information and keeps me straight. Otherwise, I would be a complete mess, but I do want to recognize the work that she does. Out of the participants we have, five of the six are currently employed. All of them have driver's licenses. All of them are consistent right now with their medication and clean out of the six that we do have there. They are mending relationships with their families. We have them working in this community. We have them breaking the cycle of incarceration, and this program and the support you have given us means everything to those individuals, and we do thank you for it. The Council for the Accountability Courts recently awarded our program a grant totaling Of that, we will be receiving federal funds in the amount of $104,467, and we'll be asking for a required match from the county of $11,607. We are requesting to use date funds for that, as we have in the past, to provide for continued substance abuse counseling, drug testing supplies, and also our contract services to address the substance abuse issues that each of our participants does have in addition to the mental health issues that they come before us with. Based on that, the Judges of the Superior Court, on behalf of Paulding County, would like to recommend that you accept this grant and that, Mr. Chairman, you be authorized to execute all necessary documents. I stand ready for any questions if you have them.
Let's roast David Lyles.
Please do.
Any comments, questions?
I just want to say thanks for heading this up and thank you for helping him with it. I think it's very important. I have lots of nieces and nephews all over the United States. They have gotten their hands in drugs, and they have not had this opportunity, so thank you, and thanks, Judge Bucci.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to add, I'm reminded of an incident with the sheriff years ago where the county had a mentally impaired inmate that needed help desperately, and at the time, the sheriff hauled that inmate to one of the regional mental health facilities run by the state, and literally at that time, they wouldn't let the inmate in the door because of cutbacks and a policy of shutting down the state's mental health system due to time of cutbacks. And at that time, we just did not have a resource. We had a person in custody who needed help, and we didn't have the resources to manage immediately, and the person is physically in the car in need of help, and we had nowhere to turn. But programs like this certainly help to eliminate those dilemmas from ever happening, and it's obviously a good program to help with that.
Thank you.
We tried to get the word out for graduations. Judge Lyles only had a second one last week or week before, and I would encourage you to want to have a happy day. Go to either that graduation or the, or Dean Bucci's, Judge Bucci's. And I can pretty much guarantee you this afternoon, this evening, it'll be a 5-0 vote.
All right. Thank you. And just as a quick update on the status of our courts, I currently have litigants in my courtroom waiting on me, so I'm going to ask for, to be excused from here, but we are still up and running, and we have people back in the courtroom at this point, so it's all good news for us right now.
Thank you all for being here. It's made our Board of Commissioners meeting.
All right. Thank you all very much.
So that's the conclusion of regular business. We have no executive session today, no one who's signed up for non-agenda items. We'll start over here on my left with a pro tem. If you have anything you want to advertise or shout out or anything.
Just a reminder of the community job fair that's going on this Friday from 2:00 to 6:00, and this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 at the College Career Academy at 455 Dallas Acworth Highway over in New Hope at the old W.C. Avenue School. The chamber, the EDO, and the school system has put work together to put this on to help businesses in our county find, you know, get out there and get in front of maybe someone seeking jobs since there is a lack of, it seemed like applicants, it seemed like, coming in, so trying to help businesses here in this county connect with someone maybe looking for a job, so come out, please.
Go ahead. You're good. Sheriff Gullidge, Colonel Hutton, if you're still back there, I don't see them, but thank you. Thank you for all y'all do. Those are a lot of numbers that safeguard our county, and we appear, all of us, I appreciate it. And, you know, some people on the panel here like to double dip and not only celebrate Father's Day, but also their birthday on the same day, which was two days ago, so happy birthday, Keith.
Thank you, Chairman.
I think we had another birthday boy this week.
Last week.
Last week.
You missed.
Chuck, isn't your birthday this month as well?
No, it's next week.
Next week, okay. Three birthdays. Happy birthday, guys.
Right here, no evil, see no evil.
I just wanted to give an update on Mulberry Rock Park. They are working their tails off to, because I ask Mr. Justice every meeting, "Where are we at? Where are we at?" And it's a good update. I think we are just finishing up with the engineering and looking to pull a couple permits, so we should be started by the fall. So that, I mean, everybody's asking, everybody wants to know when Phase Two is started, so there's your update.
Do you have anything, Mr. Dunn?
I've been busy celebrating today.
Okay. Well, thanks everyone again for being here. That's the conclusion of our meeting, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. My Commissioner Stover, I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.